Welcome everyone. Good afternoon. I guess afternoon here anyway. Good afternoon. Welcome to the pulmonary hypertension associations first ever. Healthcare provider town hall meeting. We welcome all of you. I am Tony Launston, I'm the Chair of the Board of Trustees of PHA. I became involved with PHA back in two thousand eight. Upon the passing of my niece, my sister's daughter. She had to wear from a PH called PVOD. She passed away very, very quickly and I decided that it would be best to keep the memory of her alive and and also help to ensure that we're moving towards a cure for this disease and to help other things like myself. To not have to go through that same sort of scenario. So. That's my story. This meeting is an opportunity to get to know PHA better. And to learn about our work, priorities, post COVID. Whether you're a member or not, everyone is welcome and can benefit from the information on this call. So a bit of housekeeping, only the speakers can be seen and heard. So participants are muted, but you can enter questions or comments in the chat section. And we'll address those at the end of the of the meeting. So. Again, if you have an issue with connectivity, then reach out and someone from the staff will help you. So calls being recorded. You'll receive a link to the playback later this week. And we invite you to forward it to your colleagues who may have missed it and encourage you to do that. So. Let me start by reminding everyone the reason that we exist as an organization. Our vision is to eventually rid the world of PH. The reason I came on board and I've been on board as many roles for the old years. And our mission is to extend and improve the lives of those affected by PH in the meantime. Want to go over the, talk a little bit about the agenda at this point. It's a pretty packed agenda covering four items. And Matt Renato, PHA's President and CEO, will highlight the what's new with PHA today focusing on strengthening the organization, making it more nimble and more responsive to constituent needs. We have Jaeger Pratt that will cover for Katie Kroner and Jaeger will talk about engagement and will introduce you with PHA's main advocacy agenda and why they matter to you as a provider and how to get involved. Next, Dr. Anna Hemnas and Nurse Kim Jackson, two of our medical leaders and will address the work of providers on behalf of PHA as well as opportunities that are available to providers who want to get involved or benefit from PHA's membership. We will also hear from Dr. Vinit Agarwal, who received a PHA research grant and he'll talk about the impact of this grant on his work and career. So and then next on the agenda. And kind of the final piece, Doctors Delphine Young and Joel Werth will review PHA's accreditation and registry programs and present on the programs trajectory and recent successes. As you all know, that's an important part of who we are as an organization. So excited to hear about that. And remember and enter any questions or comments in the chat box. So that you can be heard and answer and questions can be answered towards the end of their grant here. So on to you, Matt.
Thank you, Tony. I'm Matt Renato, I'm the President and CEO of PHA, and it's really a pleasure to be here today with all of you. Let me start also by thanking you for your time and for the work that you do to care for patients in our community. So the world has been definitely transformed by the COVID nineteen pandemic and yet with all the challenges and all the uncertainties that we had to go through. PHA really still stands very resolute in delivering on our mission as Tony explained. And today I want to shed some light on how we are navigating this sort of post pandemic landscape. Our organization now operates as a fully virtual entity with our headquarters in Washington, D.C. And this this change, this shift has really allowed us to acquire exceptional talent from across all the United States. Who are very dedicated professionals committed to PHA's cause. During twenty twenty one, we also worked to develop our values, which form what I would call the bedrock of our organizational culture. We're driven by a very profound sense of purpose. We focus on improving the lives of patients. We foster a culture of respect, not just among our team members, but also in our interactions with the wider community. Effective and open communication is deeply ingrained now in our DNA and that enables us that seamless collaboration and understanding among the team members and also the volunteer leaders like the ones talking to you today. And above all compassion, compassion guys are a reaction recognizing the vital importance of empathy in our work. To further strengthen our capabilities at the beginning of this year, we actually strategically integrated PHA with the pulmonary hypertension care centers. Which until recently operated as two separate independent organizations and this alliance really allowed us to respond much faster and effectively to the diverse challenges that come our way with a very united front. And most importantly, with increased efficiency and better use of very limited resources. We're going to talk about that later today as well. And finally, recognizing the power of data, which I'm sure as medical professional you would agree. We have launched a project to maximize our data potential and by collecting better and more comprehensive data from our patient and professional communities and by leveraging the insights more efficiently, we are really empowering PHA to make better and better informed decisions and achieve much more meaningful connection and outcomes with our constituents. So we're transitioning to what is called an association management system. At the beginning of the fall and will radically change our ability to leverage data effectively and also to provide you as healthcare professionals with data that you can use to launch research projects or just make more informed decisions about your patients. Now, many of you will be happy to know that we are in the midst of updating and upgrading the PHA website, enhancing the navigation and the user friendliness of the website, the the design, this new redesign will ensure that our stakeholders can easily access the information and the resources that they need. And that will enable us to make stronger connections and deliver greater value. And this really comes hand in hand with an engagement and awareness campaign that we're also launching this fall to position PHA as a resource. And as an extension of your care team. And in order to deliver on our mission, we have a very clear roadmap in the form of our strategic plan. I vocating for the PH communities where we house all of our awareness programs and also our efforts to educate legislators and policymakers on the challenges and the struggles of the disease of which we'll hear about in a minute, more about it in a minute. We fund and we promote research by providing grants to investigators. But also by highlighting research through our programs. Our third goal really ensures that we develop and we provide patient education both online and live events like conference. As well as providing the space for patients and caregivers to find support in each other at our support groups around the country. Our fourth goal is to ensure that we have both the financial resources and the human resources to provide the programs that we've developed. And finally, we focus on you, the healthcare professionals through CME programs, CME education related to PH diagnosis and treatment and the accreditation program that ensures very high standards of care are provided at the eighty plus medical centers across the country and we'll cover those in a minute as well. Now, I'd like to invite Jaeger Spratt, our advocacy and treatment access program manager to highlight the main issues that are affecting our community today and how PHA is addressing them and how you can get Jaeger.
Awesome. Thanks, Matt. So yeah, hi, everyone. Jaeger Spratt here. So the first topic that we're kind of focusing on in the advocacy arena at the moment. Just as it says, reducing the management of the benefit management burden. Definitely PHA feels strongly that caring for pulmonary hypertension patients, that care should be driven by clinical judgment. The patient clinician relationship should be first and foremost. Basically, that insurance company should not be dictating the care that patients receive. So to that end, we are very much in favor of and doing everything that we can to support the Safe Step Act. That would basically put in place guardrails for step therapy requirements so that patients who need to bypass those requirements and receive the, you know, clinician recommended care can do so in a timely fashion. Just as a little aside, also another piece that we're working on is the PAIR Summit for prior authorizations. So I'll, I think Matt is going to be speaking more about that in a little bit, so I won't go into too much detail. But just that is another initiative that we're very excited about. And I do want to thank everyone who was able to contribute to the survey that went out in June. We got a lot of great responses from that. So really appreciate everyone's efforts in giving that community feedback. So the next piece that we're looking at is protecting access to charitable assistance. So for anyone on the who's listening and who may not be familiar with copay accumulators. Basically, that's when insurance companies are accepting payments through third parties such as nonprofit funds to to pay for the copayments for medications that are very expensive for patients. But then don't apply those copayments towards the patients deductible since it wasn't the patient making the payment. So the copay, the Health Copays Act addresses that little loophole that insurance companies have found. And is, you know, trying to reduce that out of pocket cost that is already entirely too high. And then the next slide. The the last third advocacy issue that we're looking at is, as I think most everyone on this call is familiar with oxygen access. I think it's a very hot button topic for the community and something that needs a lot of attention has been a problem for a while. So we are currently working on legislation with a collective of other organizations, including like ATS and Long to have some legislation put in place that would increase access to liquid oxygen, increase access to specialists like respiratory therapists, making the reimbursement rate for that better. So it's trying to work through some of the many issues in accessing supplemental oxygen, also trying to advocate with the Centers for Medicaid and Medicare Services, just looking at basically all of the different angles and aspects and stakeholders that are causing this to be a challenge for the PH community. And then if y'all are interested, I know there's plenty of healthcare professionals who are already doing wonderful advocacy work and we super appreciate you all. I know we've heard from legislators that getting that, the professional expertise perspective in those legislative meetings does go a long way. So your voice, your experiences, bringing your patient stories to legislators does really make a genuine difference. So a very quick and easy way that you can do that at the PHassociation.org/advocate. We've got several pre-written letters. So you just click the button. It gives a pre-written letter. You can type in your own perspective if you want to. If you don't have time, you can literally just send it off. The program automatically knows who your legislators are. So that's a very straightforward way to do a little bit of advocacy. For those of you who will be in town on September twenty eighth for the advocacy day, that's going to be a really wonderful in-person event. Really looking forward to seeing all of you there and doing a lot of great work and the community building to be, you know, present together on Capitol Hill and making a difference there. So strongly encourage anyone and everyone who can make it to make sure you arrive on time early on Thursday. The training starts at eleven. So yeah, look forward to seeing you all there. And if you're not able to make it to symposium, there are still ways to do in-person work. Every legislator does have a state-based like district office, whether that's, you know, you know, like singular district, if that's the House of Representatives or multiple locations for senators. You're certainly able to set up meetings and if you're interested in that, you can certainly reach out to me as well. And I'd be happy to work with you to set up in district meetings at any time or potentially inviting members of Congress to your practice, or if there's a support group in your area. There's a lot of different ways to reach out and start building those relationships with your legislators to kind of catch their ear and make sure that they're listening to issues that are important to PHA. And that's all I've got.
Thank you, Jaeger. And Dr. Hemnas and Nurse Jackson are next.
Thanks, Matt. My name's Anna Hemnas and I'm Chair of the Scientific Leadership Council. Just to explain a little bit about what this is, it's a group of scientific and medical experts in the field of pulmonary hypertension. People like cardiologists, pulmonologists and rheumatologists. We also make sure we have a pediatrician representation on the SLC. We are key partners with the Pulmonary Hypertension Association for accomplishing their mission towards early and more accurate diagnosis and appropriate treatment for pulmonary hypertension patients and also advancing the field of pulmonary hypertension research that you'll hear a little bit more in a minute. We also support PHA's educational mission, including CME on-demand activities and the every other year conference. We support the advances in Pulmonary Hypertension Journal, Practice Library and a number of other online resources. Also, PHA's Patient and Caregiver Programming and Advocacy with the Pulmonary Hypertension Association, including what you just heard about from Jaeger. We advance pulmonary hypertension through supporting the research committee that is a great mechanism for particularly young people to get grants to support their work earlier in their career. And also, we also participate in grant review for the the academic mission of of PHA. So you might be wondering why I got involved with the PHA. I went to one of the every other year meetings very early in my career and was truly inspired that this organization really was a group of people that includes patients, caregivers. You know, the staff on PHA physicians, researchers who truly want to make the world better for people living with pulmonary hypertension envision one day a future, hopefully without this disease. And all working together to achieve that mission. And I still to this day find inspiration from the organization and sort of in a practice standpoint. As opposed to sometimes sitting with frustration with issues that come up. I feel like the PHA is a really great venue for trying to find creative solutions to the challenges that we face in caring for patients with pulmonary hypertension. So I feel like it's a, it's a real great advocate for for patients and making their lives better. So. And Todd Bull was here, but I was not here. So I think I will not pass the torch to him. Do I next go to Vinit?
Yes.
Dr. Agarwal, over to you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Hemnas. My name is Vinit Agarwal. I'm a, an early career physician scientist and I was very lucky to be a recipient of an early career research award through the Pulmonary Hypertension Association and you know, on a, you know, beyond having, you know, additional funds to 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 advance my research program on a personal level. This award meant a little bit more to me because as as Dr. Hemnas mentioned, this is an organization of all of the important stakeholders in pulmonary hypertension, you know, patients, caregivers, professionals, advocates. So having their vote of confidence and and validation that the work that I'm doing matters to our community in in some ways was was both inspirational and 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 very important to me. On an institutional level, this award has, you know, served a very similar purpose. I think knowing my, you know, knowing from my institution standpoint, knowing that I'm doing work that I think is important to the community has been helpful to continue my support on an institutional level as well. And and finally, you know, it was mentioned a little bit earlier that, you know, we we just kind of came out of the a once in a lifetime COVID pandemic. And in in a general level, I'll say that historically, anytime there have been recessions, financial restraints, pandemics, if you will, the group of people who who end up being very vulnerable in the research community end up being early career physician scientists, early career scientists. The people who have limited funding at the time, but serve as the future, you know, ten fifteen years further, you know, further down the road. And having the support of foundations to serve as a bridge during that time was incredibly important to me. As you can see, I was a recipient of the twenty twenty award, just as the pandemic had started to take off. And the support of this award not only gave me generous funds to continue my work, but also protected me in some ways from other obligations. And so I I think that this this award mechanism is is particularly important for those who are in my career stage and I'm very appreciative for the for the support in the award. Thank you.
Thank you, Vinit. Nurse Jackson.
Thank you, Matt. So I am Kim Jackson and I am the Chair for the PH Professional Network. The PHPN is composed of non-physician clinicians, nurses, advanced practice providers and allied health professionals. And it's led by the PHPN Executive Committee. Our mission is to advocate for the PH community and provide quality patient care and support. We support the PHA by developing clinical practice tools and patient education resources for healthcare providers. We also provide continuing continuing education programming and connect with the PH healthcare professionals through networking and mentoring. And I specifically like to talk about the mentoring program because it was such such a great help to me when I started out in PH. Back in two thousand fifteen, when I went to my first symposium and I was kind of lost there and got to networking there and was told about the mentoring program. And that program really truly helped me along the way. And just to mention that for a while, we had kind of gotten away from it. And so we're excited that we're back with the mentoring program and even haven't, we've expanded it. So it's, that's one exciting thing for me. Also, the PHPN. We partner with PHA to develop focused continuing education programming and also would, we lead the programming for the PHPN Symposium. And that brings together healthcare professionals from around the world. So that's another exciting venture that we do that that makes it really exciting. And our goal is just to support the professional development through, again, through the mentor mentoring program and the networking. Thank you.
Thank you. So this town hall was open to all. So please know that if you're not a member of PHA, you're welcome to join and enjoy the benefits of membership. PHA's professional members are truly a cross disciplinary community working to advance PH mission and is open to a very diverse group of medical professionals. As you can see in the slide and as you heard from Nurse Jackson. We want to ensure that the whole care team has an opportunity to take advantage of our resources with PHA. And those resources are either free or discounted CME programs like PHA Conference or the PHPN Symposium, which is coming up at the end of September, like Nurse Jackson mentioned. In addition, PHA's online university has twenty seven active courses offering up to twenty CMEs or CUs, which are free to members. Our practice library is a collection of actual protocols and procedure documents. As well as what we call consideration documents, which are used in in the absence of published guidelines. And in addition, we offer patient handouts and worksheets that are both in English and Spanish and those help facilitate communication on procedures and on care recommendations between providers and patients. We're very excited, like Nurse Jackson said, about the relaunch of our mentorship program, which is available to all professional members of PHA. There are currently, there's currently a roster of twenty three experienced PH peer mentors. And applicants can apply to be paired with a mentor who can help them answer questions, develop their knowledge and skills and and achieve their professional goals. There are already eleven active mentor mentee pairings and I'd like to encourage you to either apply or to recommend someone to be either a mentor or a mentee. Our lister is a program that directly connects hundreds of PH professionals with each other for peer consultations and there's close to twelve hundred professionals that are active on the two listservs. And since two thousand twenty one, we have devoted about a quarter million dollars annually to research grants offered to members of PHA like Dr. Agarwal. There are three grant programs to apply from and recently PHA announced a partnership with NIH to provide funding to support resubmissions of very high quality projects to NIH for full funding. And I've only highlighted some of the benefits and for more information I ought to join, I I encourage you to visit the website here on this slide. We will now address two of our flagship programs, their growth and the success of what they mean to patient care. Doctors Young and Werth will cover the next section. Dr. Young.
Thank you, Matt. I really appreciate you putting together this first ever town hall for PHA. And I appreciate all the speakers that have gone before me. I am the current Chair of the Accreditation Registry Committee. And and my role is to just provide an overview of this program. And I think that near the ten year anniversary of this program that started in two thousand fourteen, it's a, it's a good chance to take a look back at where we started. To look at where we are now and where we might be going in the future. And this slide that's from the PHA website goes back a little bit in history to show that that while the program started in two thousand fourteen, it was a result of three years of hard work from many in the community, including those here on this call. And and just to remember that and appreciate their their work. As Matt said earlier, the Registry and Accreditation Program has now merged with PHA. It's now robust and growing and as that happened during the first year of my chairship, I get to spend the second year looking forward to what we can do. Part of the reason the merger seems so appropriate at this time was because we felt like the mission that the accreditation and registry program started with. It's listed second here. The first listed here is the PHA mission and the second is the mission of the PHCC. Were really overlapping to to improve the overall quality of care and the long-term outcomes of patients. This slide really highlights visually the growth and the success of this program. There's now over eighty three accredited centers in the last nine years. There's fifty nine Centers of Comprehensive Care, fifteen regional care centers and nine pediatric centers of comprehensive care. There are new centers in the pipeline continually. So we're very excited about that. And this is where I headed over to my friend Joel Werth.
Thanks, Delphine. And thanks, Matt, and everyone at PHA for putting together this town hall. I think this is really important to get the word out about all the PHA programs and opportunities for providers. Like others on the call, I got involved with PHA fairly early in my career and through going to the international conference and it's been a wonderful organization to be involved with and terribly supportive of both patients and providers. And it's a great partnership. As part of the PHCC program, as was mentioned, it was a recommendation by the SLC in two thousand eleven to start this National Care Center Program and in an accreditation program for 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 hospitals and programs around the country. And the goals were really to try to improve the quality of care that was being delivered and to improve access of care and also to grow the community to or outreach to all the centers around the country and try to bring us together. And as as we got into designing the program and there's a number of people on the call who were involved right from the very beginning. We realized we needed a registry in order to be able to measure the quality of care that we were delivering and 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 in support for reaccreditation to hold programs accountable for the care. And the other And the other, the other benefits of having a registry are to be able to understand some of the risk factors relative to patient outcomes and look at clinical effectiveness. And also the registry is a terrific platform for research and to help facilitate clinical trials and new drug therapy development. And again, it really worked to help facilitate collaboration within our community. The growth has been pretty exponential, both of the care center program and of the registry that is an outgrowth of the care center program. So the registry, anyone who's an accredited site can participate in the registry. And you can see that from two thousand fourteen to two thousand twenty three, as Delphine noted, we now exceeded eighty sites, I think eighty four sites this year. And it was a little bit of a pause during the pandemic because we could no longer go do onsite evaluations for accreditation. But the program was pretty nimble and pivoted and did some remote accreditations. And FAR enrollment continued straight through twenty twenty and twenty twenty one and now exceeds twenty six hundred patients, I believe, in FAR. Next slide, please. So the, the registry, we have sixty nine out of the eighty four sites currently participating and more coming online. There's more than twenty six hundred patients enrolled, which gives us really tremendous power to be able to look at our care that's being delivered and also as a platform for research, as we'll touch upon. And basically, this is a US-based prospective observational patient registry. We are really enrolling PH and CTF patients along with pediatric patients. And it's essentially, it's all new patients, so incident patients within the past six months of first visit. Next slide, please. We have some early data from FAR about how the program itself is performing. You can see that WHO functional class has been improving over time. So the, we look at class three and four at the time of enrollment. It's down now to about fifty percent of patients are class three and four and fifty percent are class one and two. If we look back at the original PPH registry for the NIH in the nineteen eighties, it was over seventy percent of patients were class three and four at first contact. And during, and for reveal, it was about fifty five percent. So we're hoping to see that that continues to tick downward. You can see there was a slight uptick in twenty twenty and twenty twenty one, which may have been from the pandemic itself. As you are likely aware, there were delays in cancer diagnoses and other serious illness during that time because of care restraints. We look at hospitalizations and you can see that the hospitalizations have also been coming down even through twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. And also the mortality rate has been reduced. Or we're seeing associated reduction in mortality. And this is from really holding centers accountable for care, showing them their, the quality of the care, comparing them with other sites around the country and allowing centers to do their best work, trying to give them the resources or help them garner the resources from their medical centers so that they can do the work well. Next slide, please. We look at FAR, both as it's a, really was designed as a, as a registry to support care quality and reaccreditation, but it also is a terrific platform for research. To date, there's been over forty studies performed with using the FAR database, fifteen publications, six just last year. And the registry data can be useful for clinical trial design. So there are FAR research reports that are developed for companies that are looking to test feasibility of new products. And so we can partner to help with drug, drug clinical research as well as intrinsic clinical research. And you can see the type of intrinsic clinical research that's being done here in the pie diagram. Next slide. I'm going to turn it back over to Delphine to talk about sort of the next steps in the future for the PHCC program and for the registry. And, and allow her to wrap up. So thank you very much for asking me to speak today. And I want to really say thank you to all my colleagues who have made the PHCC such a resounding success and and continue to do so. So thanks, everyone.
Agreed. I forgot in my enthusiasm to start the, to just say that I just introduced a little bit about who I am and I'm a pediatric cardiologist. I'm out here in Seattle Children's Hospital. And I've also been a member of PHA for almost my entire career. My center is accredited and I want to say that one of the reasons I've been excited about this program is I've been able to witness the improvements that we want to make to our center based on wanting to be, remain accredited and to participate in FAR. So I said earlier that we are looking toward the future, the next ten years of many at the Registry and Accreditation. Some areas of opportunities that we've seen is to encourage expansion to areas that currently have no accredited centers. To expand the pediatric network, to consider partnership with other registries. We realize that registries take a lot of effort. And we'd like to try to coordinate efforts at, at centers and to minimize rework and double work. And we really hope that we can use the FAR and leverage the data to advance research. All kinds in proposals, peer reviewed publications, ancillary studies and supporting drug development among, among some ideas. Lastly, I'm going to close with this map that the PHA has helped us develop. Now that we have centers accredited nationwide, we're looking a little bit more closely to see whether we can tell patient populations that are underserved with, with regard to accredited centers and to see how we can reach out and partner with centers who are there to consider accreditation. And that is the end of my presentation. Thank you for listening and we'll be here to answer any questions at the end.
Thank you, doctors. And I would like to end this meeting by highlighting the value proposition of the PHCC program beyond the current gains that Doctors Young and Worth just described. So the good news to begin with, starting next year, the centers participating in the registry will receive a rebate payment for enrolling patients based on a formula that is going to be determined by the accreditation committee. And this formula is going to take into account the existing enrollees as well as the annual enrollments. We also understand that many centers are under pressure from their hospital administration to decrease costs in general. And for that reason, we're looking to launch a study to determine the value of accreditation to your center, comparing metrics before and after accreditation and to other non-accredited centers. So we'll be launching before the end of the year and it's important that you participate in this study, which will really require that you respond to an online questionnaire. But if you're entering the program this or next year, you may be asked to participate in a multi-year pre and post case study. And there's more to come on that once we, we have the details. But one of the most exciting programs that we're currently working on, and Jagger alluded to that earlier, in order to increase the value of accreditation is what we have coined the Gold Carding Program. We are currently engaging with insurance companies to assess the feasibility of launching a pilot program that would allow centers meeting certain criteria to bypass or fast track prior authorizations, thus saving you time and paperwork and ensuring that the patients have access to their therapies with no delays. And as you've seen today, we have data that demonstrates improvement in care under the program. And we believe that centers should be able to reap the benefits of this success by receiving what we call the Gold Card or a pass to expedite patient treatment authorizations. We will meet with payers at the end of this month to learn more about their thinking about this concept and hold a summit with payers to propose the program by the end of the year. And our goal is to solicit program participants soon and we hope that you consider taking part. There's precedent about such programs in, in other fields of medicine. So we're, we're hopeful that this will also take off in PH. So this concludes the presentation portion of the town hall meeting and we'd like to answer your questions and address any concerns or any comments you may have. Please use the chat function. And Zan and Daniel will read your questions out loud and, and direct them to the best person to respond. So remember you're muted, so you have to use the chat function. So if you have any questions, please go ahead and add them to the chat. And thank you again for participating. Remember this is being recorded. We'll send the playback link later so you can distribute it to your colleagues, hopefully. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. We do have a kickoff question while everybody else is thinking of what they would like to know while they have all of these really great stakeholders at the table. I encourage you to take advantage of this opportunity. This question, I believe, is, is for Delphine and Joel. It says, could you please elaborate more about PHA's goal of improving quality of life and clinical research focus in this area? Specifically, funding support in decreasing psychological distress using non-pharmaceutical approaches to complement care to benefit patients' mental health and wellness. I would like to learn more about NIH collaborative funding opportunities. But I think there, the question is really twofold. First of all, do you elaborate more about PHA's goal of improving quality of life? And then also what clinical research is being done in this area that we know of?
I think I can speak a little bit to what clinical research is being done with the registry and the, the, that initiative. There is a publications committee for the FAR. And as a part of the FAR, there is a quality of life part that patients can answer. And I would say that many of the proposals related to looking at patients in the FAR with regard to anything from prognosis to lung transplantation to referrals for therapy or outcomes. The vast majority take into account the quality of life component. I'm not sure if that answers the question, but I would say that there's a lot of interest in the medical community into understanding this more. Joel?
Yeah, thanks, Delphine. Great question. I think that one of the things that we did when the criteria were being set for the PHCC accreditation was that the, each site needed to be involved with patient support groups and outreach in the community for, for accreditation. And they had to demonstrate that there was a participation and leadership in that realm for psychosocial support for patients. So that was embedded in the structure of the program right from the start. And as Delphine noted, there are quality of life measures in FAR. And so there are plenty of places to partner with the program in advancing that type of work and research in that field. I hope that answers your question.
Maybe Matt has some more about funding?
Funding of the program or funding of research. So there's, the funding of research comes from the grants program. And we encourage investigators to use FAR data in their research. Any research, intervention research or any type of research that they're using. They can submit proposals to the grants committee. In addition, I believe in the last two or three years, there've been several publications that came out of FAR research. So it's been turning several papers already from independent investigators who use the registry to conduct their own research.
Great. Thank you so much. Another question, which is, you know, directed at really any of our panelists. What are your recommendations for early career professionals to initially become involved with PHA? To get to the level that many of you are at, such as on our committees or on SLC or chairing one of these? How did you get started and how do you recommend others begin?
Can I take that one? Is that okay?
Yes.
I think I got started working on the online university, actually working on the educational pieces of PHA. And I really enjoyed the educational piece and mission of the PHA. And I think it was a good opportunity to network also and let other people get to know me and, and the work that I could do. And through there, then I got involved with helping to plan the conference first as just a committee member. And then later I actually like led the conference committee. And then ultimately got involved with scientific leadership council. But I think that there's, I, I would say that there's a number of different opportunities to get involved in the PHA depending on what your own personal interests are, whether it's education through the education group or getting involved with research. There's always interest in mentoring young people and how to read grants. And, and then also, of course, through the FAR. And many people do like to propose projects to the FAR, have research questions that they'd like to ask there. So I think those are, those are, those are the ones that I can think of off the top of my head, probably based on my own personal journey. But I, I would say that if you are interested in getting involved, feel free to reach out to me or anybody really on the SLC. And I think we could direct you into a right direction. Also, honestly, the PHA staff, like you, Zan. And Katie Croner and Macronato are all incredibly knowledgeable on, on what activities are happening at the PHA and where people can help out and get plugged in.
I would also like to comment on that. I think that what really got me started and really helped me was going to the symposium. And that was my first contact with PHA was going to the symposium, other than going on the, just checking out the website. But I found at the first symposium, again, I, I was there, I was lost. I didn't know anybody. And really did not know a lot about pulmonary hypertension at the time. And the community was just so welcoming. You know, from people coming up to me, just asking where I was from and, you know, asking where how long I'd been working in pulmonary hypertension and, and willing to share with me. And the networking and encouragement, they, they all encouraged me to become involved. And, and then they, you know, we exchanged business cards and they actually contacted me, reached out to me and encouraged me to become involved in committees. So the symposium was, was a big boost for me as far as in my early career.
And I also do a quick plug, I think, is Elizabeth Josloff sent out an email just recently, we're looking for new members for many of the committees across the the FAR registry. There's, there's many opportunities. I, I can't even think of all the different committees. We have at least six different committees. So maybe Elizabeth can send out some information on the, in the chat box or later.
Fantastic. Some really great ideas there. All right. The next question is, since medication co-payments are often a factor in delaying treatment initiation and continuation, has PHA considered developing its own co-pay assistance program? What does PHA do to advocate for lower drug pricing and expansion of generic alternatives? And I think both Matt and Jagger might have some wisdom to add to this.
Sure. I can take a stab at that first and then Jagger, please feel free to add. So the co-payment assistance program is something we would probably love to have one. Unfortunately, it's an issue of funding. Usually the programs that can fund co-payment assistance are very well funded from pharma or other sources that we can have access to beyond our smaller budget funding. However, we do interact with those programs. And Jagger and Katie and the rest of the team are in constant contact with those programs to ensure that they don't dry up. Unfortunately, it happens from time to time. So you will see messages from us letting patients know that program so and so no longer has funds. But as soon as we find out of a program having the funds, we communicate with our community so that they can take advantage of those co-payment assistance programs. We also have informal conversations with pharma who are critical in funding those programs and ensuring that year after year, especially at the beginning of the year, they don't forget to fund those programs. And then there's funding available. So we do our part in making sure that those programs keep getting funding constantly. Unfortunately, there's not an unlimited supply of funds, so sometimes they do dry up. The other question in terms of keeping drug costs, well, we definitely supported the Inflation Reduction Act, which calls for lower drug costs, but as you know, it's generated a lot of controversy, especially among the pharma companies who believe that that is unfair. But we do keep open channels of communications with pharma to ensure that therapies are available to everyone who needs it. So one of our goals is treatment access, and that means every drug for every patient when they need it. And so when we know patients in certain cases that they can't access their therapy, we sort of set our wheels in motion to try to help that patient in particular. Jagger, is there anything else you would like to add?
Um, I don't think too much, really, Matt. I think you touched on most everything that I would say. So yeah, the main things, just as far as like, yeah, developing our own co-pay assistance, obviously, that would be, you know, amazing if we are able to get to there one day. But I think that would be probably a much further down the road thing just because of the sheer volume of funding need out there. But yeah, definitely, we are, you know, try to be very in communication and like transparent with both patients that are calling in, looking for funding, as well as communicating with the currently existing funds to, you know, make sure we let people know when they are open. And as Matt said, trying to encourage any sources of funding that we know of and have connections with to continue funding those grants that are so needed in the community.
Thank you. And we do have a few more minutes to answer questions if anybody would like to send them in. We also, Elizabeth also added that the place to go apply for PHCC committees is phassociation.org/PHCCcommittees. And again, you can always reach out to PHA staff or just ask us a question on our website, and that will get sent to the appropriate person fairly quickly.
Well, Zan, let me conclude by thanking all the panelists today, everyone who participated. I think this is probably going to be the first of many town hall meetings. So we thank you for coming to our first kickoff town hall meeting. And we hope you got good information out of it. And remember to spread the word about what you learned today and share the link once it's available. So thanks again. Remember that we're always available to answer any questions, and you know hopefully where to find us. So thank you. Bye, everyone.
Thank you.